July 12, 2024, City Council meeting in order. Would you please stand and join me in the implication pledge? Father, we come before you today to give thanks for the opportunity to serve. Thank you for our wonderful city. God, we ask you, you as those who can be here today, now we ask you to put your special armor protection in comfort around Councilman Donald and his family. And we ask that you be with our council today and forward as they make decisions to best serve the citizens of our city. As he sits in your son's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge, will these be the United States of America, the republic which stands unencumbered, under God, invisible, good, good, the team is the essence of God.
Next item is roll call. I see Marques is all council members present, exception of Councilmember Wallace and Stovall. We have Councilman Dive. Here's the wig of Oz. We have invitation for public comment. Mind you all that our public comment is for three minutes, speak something just on the agenda, and so we will start with Mike Shipley.
Check, check. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. I appreciate you letting me speak on the matter of physically your budget 25. I'm Mike Shipley, the Vice President of Firefighters Association Local 1850. Today I'll be speaking on behalf of Corey Bradford, our President of the Association, who has regrets not being able to be here due to prearranged time out of town with his family. I want to start out by giving some insight for the ones who may or may not know what it means to be a firefighter when comparing salaries versus worked hours. A firefighter works an average of 2,916 hours a year. Eight hundred and thirty-six hours are 20.9 weeks more than individual work in a 40-hour work week for the same salary. Not to mention, a firefighter works a part-time job, which most of us have to do to provide for our families. That equates to an average of two full-time jobs a year. In the past 30 days ending July 9th, the department has ran roughly 973 calls of service to the city and are on pace to exceed the total number of calls for 2023. On top of our regular calls for service, we have in-service classes, company-level training, public education events, and the list goes on, but we all do it with pride, integrity, and willing to serve. The demands, risk, and expectations of the job are high, and we strive to keep it there. It's not only the physical demands, but also the mental. When we show up to a call, it's usually the worst day of someone's life, and we're expected to make it better. We carry the weight of that with us every single day. Twenty to 30% of firefighters meet the criteria for PTSD during their careers. This compares to the 6.8% of a lifetime risk of the general population. 68% of firefighters have the risk of becoming diagnosed with cancer, more than the general public. This equates to an average of 37 firefighters that have the possibility to get PTSD and 102 with cancer. I, Corey Bradford, am a 19-year Jackson Fire Department veteran and have seen more progress in the past few years than I ever have, and it's in all regards to our great leadership Chief Riddle, the staff with a common vision of protecting the citizens of Jackson, and the best interests of the employees at the fire department. These proposed cost of living adjustments would grant members of the department to have more downtime, needed to heal physically, mentally, and spend more time with their families. It would also cause some not to have to work as many hours on their part-time job. This would help to improve the quality of their life as they so do deserve. I want to encourage all our council members to visit your local fire station, one in your district or the one closest to you, and meet the men and women of the department, not on a political basis, but just get to know and see what these great men and women do day in and day out. In closing, I'm asking for the council for their deep consideration in passing the budget set forth by the fire department employees who go above and beyond on a daily basis doing the best job in the world because it's a calling for the ones of us to do this job. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Perfect comment, too.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Captain Seth Ziller.
Morning, City Council. I've got a lot to read, so I'm going to read really fast to get it in my three minutes. The job of a firefighter is a calling. It's a love and a passion. As a family, we celebrate our victories and ultimately let each other to rest. But this job is not for everyone. Not everyone can handle the physical and emotional stresses that the job demands. There's a price to pay. There's an old saying that I wish my mind could forget what my eyes have seen. We spend a large portion of our careers dealing with unspeakable tragedy the public may only experience once in a lifetime if they're so unlucky. I've held a miscarried baby at 20 weeks and seen her heart stop beating. The last breath of a woman in a rollover accident picked human body farts up along the side of the road as her family screamed in terror. We have done CPR, finds daily. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
These are not milestones in our careers. These are every day, week in and week out. I don't say all this for a pat on the back or to be treated like a hero. I say this to hopefully paint a picture of the people who are represented in this budget. 240 hours a month were gone from our families. A regular full-time job employee works 160 hours a month. That's 20 additional work weeks spent gone from our families, holidays missed, and memories that can never be relived. Halfway through my career, my wife has spent 1,400 nights alone. That's almost four years. It's important to recognize this when looking at our annual salaries. Many of us are doing this job for $17 an hour and mowing yards on our days off after running calls all night to keep up with these challenging times. The Jackson Fire Department went over 10 years not long ago without a cost of living raise, and every year we don't get one theoretically, we take a pay cut. Your lives, as well as your children's, are in the hands of the next generation of firefighters. How much is that worth? Our jobs are not disposable, and it takes a lifetime of training and experience to meet the needs and expectations that are required of us on a daily basis. We are not nine-to-five. My daughter's working at a warehouse making the same hourly rate as I do. You ask for one of the finest fire departments in the state of Tennessee, and I believe we're meeting that expectation and raising our own bar every year.
Captain, I'm sorry, it's three minutes. I appreciate it.
All I ask is, in return, is the opportunity to adequately provide for our families. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you. Next, we have Caleb Meriwether.
Councilman Mayor, thank you very much. Caleb Meriwether, I've worked at 101 North Island, and I'm prepared to speak on the budget specifically as it relates to the homeless shelter proposed for Corey Street. I think in this instance, it's probably helpful that we identify common ground, and in a letter from the mayor's office on June 18th, they state essentially that area relief ministry is looking at relocating from their current site in the core of downtown to be near RIFA and the proposed shelter site. It is our goal, I guess the city's goal, to cut down on the daily foot traffic patterns crossing one end of downtown to the other. And I certainly agree with that sentiment. I think that it is important that we recognize, and I think this letter recognizes, that homeless persons and a homeless shelter are not conducive to commercial or residential development. It is my position, and I think the position of many business owners on the west side of downtown, that this homeless shelter needs to be located somewhere out at the core of downtown. It needs to be located away from a residential location, and it needs to be located away from retail commercial. So, I guess to our differences, I don't agree in sacrificing half of downtown. If we recognize that this is a problem for one side of downtown, it probably is a problem for the other side of downtown. I don't agree to put this on a residential street. These are families, these are single-family houses, and you're going to put a no-barrier homeless shelter on it? I don't agree with putting it next to a child advocacy center. I don't agree with putting it at the gateway to our downtown. We say we're going to redo this intersection. We're going to improve that neighborhood. When I say this intersection, I mean Hollywood and Airways. I do not think this is consistent with that. We've also paid LRK out of Memphis to come in and make quite a few drawings about what we're going to do around downtown, and I think the public needs to understand that is not going to be funded by the city, that is going to be funded by private development. And when a private developer comes in and asks, "What have you done for site preparation?" And the first thing we say is, "We built a no-barrier men's homeless shelter in the middle of this proposed development." I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of traction in that regard. There's been some statements that, you know, when I ask, "What is the benefit? How is this going to help this location? How is this going to help these families that live on this street?" The general response has been, "Well, Caleb, you lack compassion," and I just don't think that's true, and I don't think that's a good answer. That's just an ad hominem attack. If we want to put it there, let's come up with some real reasons about why it makes sense, as opposed to, "It's near RIFA and/or it's going to cut down on foot traffic. Let's put it somewhere that makes sense. Let's show a little bit of compassion for the residents of this street and the businesses on that side of downtown, many of whom are generational and have stuck through downtown, kind of through thick and thin." I don't think it's fair to them to drop a homeless shelter over there. So, that's my position. Thank you very much.
Mr. Meriwether, you said that the shelter should not be there. Where should it be?
What, my suggestion would be that you put an RFP out asking for anybody who has a hotel or an apartment building with at least 20 rooms, they can apply, the city can look at it, identify those that are near a residential area, kick those out, identify those that are near a retail commercial district, kick those out. I think you could buy a building for a lot less than $3.5 million. I think you could get into one for around $1 million, and then you've got $700,000 of federal money to come in and renovate it, without any cost to the taxpayers, and you could put that money somewhere else.
Yeah, I understand what you said, but back to my original question, where should it be?
Well, that's, I think you need to start with an RFP to identify what buildings are out there and available for purchase, but I don't think that's been done.
I understand. Question's simple.
Sure.
Where do you think it should be located?
I would put it anywhere other than on a residential street or near commercial retail.
You're not answering my question. Next question I would ask you.
Okay.
This has been going on for some time.
Sure.
And last week, in our last meeting, Councilwoman Busby, Busby, sorry, sorry, requested that this be delayed for some period of time, and no one was here to speak to that. And it was on the agenda. And I asked her whether or not she thought that someone, or at least the people who asked her to put it on there, would be here.
Right.
And she said she did. And so because no one was here, that's one of the reasons why we voted to reject that. Do you know why no one was here last week to address this? Did you all know about it?
Yes, sir. I did, and I emailed, and I think I made it clear that I was out of town, and I laid out-
The other person, your collaborator.
Sure. Well, I can't speak, I think many of the business owners are back here today, but I can't speak to what they were doing last week, but I will speak to, we have been trying consistently for about two months, ever since we had the meeting at Hub City that you came to. We've been trying to come to these work sessions that I know the council has, because as I understand it, that is an opportunity to have a real legitimate conversation and not kind of a grandstanding opportunity. Those meetings, for whatever reason, were canceled. I'm not saying that's anybody's fault, but they were, and including, I think, two weeks ago, we were going to come to a work session, and then it got canceled, everybody was sick. So, we have been trying to get here to address the council in a, in a setting where it's not this, where this is really just kind of a, you know, we get up here and grandstand a little bit, but I wanted a legitimate back and forth with the council about where are we, you know, where are we going? How much are these nonprofits actually bringing in? What are some options for us? And we just haven't been able to make that happen. So, that's my answer to that.
Okay, my last question, this has been discussed by the, this council and previous councils for a few years now.
Sure.
And no one came forth with any objections or anything of that nature. Public notice has been given and all those kinds of things. And I just, just to point that out for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
All right, next we have Mr. Josh Allen.
Thank you all very much for having us up here. My name's Josh Allen. I'm with John Allen Company, and we're on 156 Airways Boulevard, right there behind Cheryl Williams and Hub City Blueprint. And I'm here to speak on an item in the 2025 budget that involves a $3.4 million construction of a men's-only homeless shelter. While I'm certain the council knows the location of the proposed shelter, I spoke with multiple businesses in the area, and they're not pleased with the location. The businesses are here, they're here today just to show the opposition to this location there behind me. Please understand that we all agree that unfortunately, there is a need for a shelter. We're growing, that's just part of the growth. And by no means are we discounting the work that's led up to this moment. More so, we're urging the hard work to continue for the search for a location that minimizes the negative effects that a homeless shelter would bring to the downtown businesses. We are businesses that have been here a long time. We've invested in our downtown. We've weathered the past three to four years and are still here, continuing to invest. Placing this shelter in the proposed location will increase the undesired foot traffic that we have witnessed increase in the past couple of years. Folks sleeping outside our businesses, folks using the restroom outside our businesses, folks are taking in illegal activities outside our businesses. This is tough to deal with. This is, this is, this hinders the growth. This shelter would go directly against the vision that's been set forth for our downtown. The Airways Board or the 10-year plan is the main entrance to our downtown, and placing a shelter right there in the middle of it would prohibit business growth and discourage visitors from coming to our downtown. These businesses are here today, have invested so much into our downtown thus far, and we feel that the best solution to further our downtown's progress is to continue the search for a shelter location that will minimize these negative effects to the businesses that have built this downtown up for so many years. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, that concludes public comments. Next up, we go to first reading, item one, proposed FY25 budget ordinance. Bobby and his stack.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everyone. Before we review the proposed budget ordinance together, I think it would be helpful to spend just a couple of minutes with the council, for the public, everyone here, to kind of summarize briefly, if you will, kind of where we've been and where we are today and what we need to do moving, moving forward. So, the Budget Committee on June the 18th reviewed the proposed budget, and they recommended that to the City Council. The City Council on June the 20th, and then I think, I'm trying to, hope I got this right, hope my memory is correct, but I believe the June 20th reading of the budget continued into Monday, the following Monday, I believe the 24th, ended up being in a work session. You all may recall that. Had several department heads here to answer your question and so forth. Ultimately, the council voted to send the proposed budget ordinance back to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met on June the 27th and reviewed the budget again and discussed some, some possible solutions to move the budget forward, and we'll talk more about those, but they recommended that the budget be sent back to the council with their recommendation of approval. That was on June 27th. Subsequent to that, I had some communication with representatives from the Comptroller's Office, not necessarily required, but it's certainly a courtesy to let them know that we were not going to meet the June 30th deadline to adopt our budget and to make sure that I understood what the process moving forward, what's expected of us, that type of thing. So, currently today, as you know, and I think the public knows, we're operating, you know which term you want to use, a continuation or an extension of the FY24 budget today. And that will be the case until we adopt a budget for FY25. And just as a reminder, we have until the end of August to, to adopt a budget without any penalties. Subsequent to that date, there's a financial penalty that the city would incur for a substantial one, actually, if a budget is not adopted. Now, with that said, continuing to operate under the FY24 budget or an extension of that budget does have an impact, has an impact on employees who are looking for their annual compensation increases, but beyond that, it also has an impact on operations of the city. Excuse me. As far as like new capital investments that might not, might be needed, new contracts that might be new to the city and are not funded necessarily in the continuation budget, things like that. So, it does, it does have, it does have, does have an impact. Now, let me, not to confuse the agenda today, but I do think this is really, really important to, for the benefit of everyone on the front end. So, there's, there's two different items on the agenda for the meeting today. The first one being the proposed budget ordinance, and the second one being a resolution to kind of direct to the city to begin the process of a potential debt issue. Now, now, those are separate issues, but they're related, as I would like to explain. So, let me be clear, in the budget resolution that you're being asked to consider today, there is no debt issue included in this budget resolution. So, there's no debt proceeds, nor are there any capital expenses that would be funded from a potential debt issue. There's no new debt service requirements related to a new debt issue. So, it is not in the budget ordinance in any particular fashion. This concept was introduced at the Finance Committee meeting back on, what was it, I think, June 27th, if I remember correctly, as, as a possible option to address what I understand to be, to, not the only two concerns with the proposed budget ordinance, but probably the two most prominent concerns of the budget ordinance. That being in no certain order, that the budget ordinance, as we will see in a minute, expenditures in the general fund exceed revenues budgeted for next year in the general fund, resulting in a spend-down of about $3 million of the general fund fund balance. And that's been mentioned to be a, a potential problem, a real concern. And the second one obviously being that there's no funding in this proposed, the only capital improvements in this proposed budget ordinance are capital improvements that we actually have funding for today and in place. So, some of the higher priority capital items, such as streets or police vehicles, et cetera, there's no funding in the budget ordinance for this. This potential debt issue that we have referred to would afford the city the opportunity to do two things. Number one, there's a process through municipal debt issue where the city, at some point in the future, could approve not only the issuance of the debt, but also what's referred to as a reimbursement resolution. And the way a reimbursement resolution works in simplest terms is it allows the city, in anticipation of a debt issue proceed between now and the time that the procedure would be realized, to continue on and spend our, our current, our current funds that the city has for the capital projects. And then when the debt issue is completed, we can take some of those proceeds and reimburse the city for those, those expenses that we incurred prior to the proceeds being completed. So, that would give us an opportunity to reimburse the general fund for the transfer that's included in the current budget. It would also allow the city to begin to plan for capital expenditures that, which would be funded through this particular, this particular debt issue. Now, so the final thing I want to say is, the resolution today that you would consider today just simply directs the city to begin the process of evaluating a potential debt issue and the size and what that would look like and what would be included and working to understand what rates may be and what the debt service requirements would be, et cetera. This does not approve a debt issue, the resolution that you're considering today. There's a separate process that we would have to go back, and we would bring specific resolutions that would authorize a debt issue, and then subsequent to that, there's a process with the Comptroller's Office that we would have to go through to get the debt issue approved. So, I wanted to explain that on the front end because it's an integral part, or it's related to the budget ordinance, and it's an opportunity to kind of address two of the larger concerns in the budget ordinance. So, let me, let me stop there. I hope that provided some clarity and didn't create more questions, but I'll be happy to try to answer them.
How long is the process to evaluate and secure? How long are we talking about?
Right. Well, it depends on many different variables, as you can, you can imagine, so-
Give me a range.
Yeah, I would say 60 to 90 days is a fair, that's been our experience in the past. I've had kind of had some preliminary discussions with some of my peers, and I understand that's kind of what we would be looking at.
Without adding everything up right now, approximately, or just about ballpark figure, how much would you be thinking about?
Well, that's to be determined by the mayor's recommendation and the council approval. However, I would remind you of a couple of things. So, as you know, we go through a bottoms-up process here at the city in preparing our budgets. We solicit a lot of input from our department heads, and we, we not only look at next year, but we look four additional years out in terms of cap, capital needs. So, when, when that process was initially completed, and I'm going to round these numbers a little bit, the request for next year through that process was about $18 million.
Thirty-two.
Thirty, well, okay. The final, the final number that made it through the submission and the mayor's office ended up being around $18 million that we were hoping to fund in this next year's budget. Now, included in that $18 million would be, and I'm rounding again, would be $6 million that we actually had funding for, and I'll point these items out very clearly when we go through the ordinance. So, $6 million of that $18 million was funded, right? So, there's kind of $12 million that there was no, no funding source for. Now, I would point out that in that $12 million number, and mayor, correct me if I'm too far off base here, but I think there was $3 million or so for street repaving and-
I think what we have now is $7 million for street repaving, additional $400,000, $500,000 for to finalize our equipment for in-house street repaving, so we can multiply that.
So, so that, that $12 million, and you, council members, you have this, this document before you today, the, the report that has the, that's highlighted in green, those are the items that are actually funded and included in this budget ordinance. The multi-page report, the longer report, that's a list of the items that we're discussing here that potentially could, could be included in a debt issue or funded through a debt issue. So, there's a process, I'm sorry.
Are we kind of getting ahead of ourselves?
Well, I hope not, because I, I can stop. I was just trying to answer the question, so. Does that help?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, very good. Let's move, let's move through the ordinance, and we'll try to, you know, you've seen the ordinance multiple times now, so I'm going to go through the ordinance, not too quick, but pretty quick, and spend most of my comments on major funds. So, if you'll look at, if you'll look at page two, and by the way, the format's the same on every page, you know, three years' worth of data and so forth. If you look at page two of the budget ordinance, at the top would be the general fund, and I would just note that currently, the general fund revenues next year are $95,692,103. Expenses are $98,770,861. So, expenses exceed revenues in this budget ordinance by $3,078,758. So, that would come from our fund balance. So, just to remind everyone and for the public, we are required to approve a balanced budget. A balanced budget, per the state's definition, is based on available funds, not, so it is acceptable for expenses to exceed revenues, as long as you have the available fund balance to, to, to fund those. revenues as long as you have the available fund balance to, to, um, to fund those. So right below that would be, uh, the pension fund.
May I ask you about the, uh, general fund before we go on?
Sure.
Okay. For transparency and clarity, under the appropriation and expenditures, uh, the transfer outs are listed, there is no total of expenditure. And I think it'd be good to have what the general fund actually spends so you can have an apples, an apples comparison over years because those transfers out vary from seven million to two million.
Well, you, you see the transfers very clearly what they are for all three of your years. I would point out, this, this, but this ordinance format is the recommended format from the comptroller's office.
Great.
We're not doing this for any specific purpose. I'll be happy to add those numbers for you real quick.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
The reason being, if you look at this and don't analyze it, it looks like the general fund spent eighty-seven million dollars back in twenty twenty-three. In reality, they spent eighty million. So it's just a matter of clarification so someone reading the report does not have to take their calculator out and add.
As I mentioned, we're using the format that's recommended by the comptroller's office.
We're going to make it a little bit better.
Okay.
You're better than the comptroller's office?
This, this one item, yes.
All right.
That was a little bit tongue-in-cheek in case anybody didn't know.
Thanks for clarifying.
Is there any reason not to show what the actual expenditures were?
So in FY twenty-five, if you take the ninety-eight billion, seven seventy, which includes the transfer and you back out the transfer, the actual expenses under your definition are ninety-six million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand and thirty-nine dollars. So would you like for me to do that for another year?
I'll, I'll just make the statement and I'll be quiet. I would like to see the actual expended and expenditures for the general fund, not the transfers. The transfers by accounting definitions are not expenditures. So I'd like to see the actual expenditures for each year so we can see what the general fund spent each year. That's it.
Do not mean to be argumentative, but the term is appropriations and the total do appropriations does include appropriating fund balance to be transferred to another fund, not to get ten. I'll be happy to do the math on all three years for you.
Look, I've done the math. This says appropriation expenditures if you look at the form right here.
I would like to ask us to continue on. We've been through three months of discussing items line by line and for that to come up at this point.
It hadn't. I brought it up a month ago and it was added on one of the reports.
I'll be happy to move through the ordinance much quicker. So the, the pension fund at the bottom, just as a reminder, that's just the, um, uh, old CD pension plan. It's a small plan. I think less than thirty beneficiaries in the plan, but we continue to fund that. Uh, top of page three, the community development fund. Um, this is the city's, um, uh, CDBG grant activity, which is managed by, um, on behalf of the city by the, by the Jackson Housing Authority. Uh, I believe they were here to report, I think at the la- the last meeting on that. Uh, at the bottom of page three would be the solid waste fund. I would note that next year revenues in the solid waste fund are fourteen point six million dollars. Um, appropriations are fourteen point nine million dollars. Uh, so there is a, a small deficit of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars budgeted in the solid waste fund for next year. Just as a reminder, solid waste revenues can only be used for solid weight, solid waste function, right? So there's no rate increase proposed in this and this does include the funding for the new three-one-one call centers included. Moving to page four, um, you see the police drug fund and the metro drug fund. Uh, these funds are restricted in, uh, these are submitted by the police department. The only comment I would offer is to remind everyone that, uh, back in FY twenty-three, the metro drug fund was transitioned to the attorney general's office for judicial wide, uh, drug fund. Uh, page, uh, five would be the debt service fund. Uh, revenues for the debt service and these would be property tax revenues. It's the source of these revenues, six million, four seventy-five, eight sixty-five for next year. Our debt service requirements next year are six million, four seventy-five, eight sixty-five, the same number. And, uh, you can see the ending fund balance in the debt service fund of, uh, two million, three ninety-one, six sixty-two. Uh, at the bottom of the page there, this is a requirement and, um, for the budget ordinance per the comptroller's format. Um, we list the various, uh, debt service payments, uh, for next year. Um, top of page six would be the capital outlay fund. I know there's been several questions about the capital outlay fund, uh, right now. Um, revenues, uh, for the capital outlay fund for next year, um, um, total, revenues actually total three million, two million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, uh, to Councilman Lawrence's point. There is a transfer from the general fund or appropriation from the general fund, two million, two eighty-four, eight twenty-two. So available funds from a revenue standpoint next year in the capital outlay fund total four million, six thirty-one, five twenty-three. Uh, there are expenses from the capital outlay fund, uh, budgeted totaling six million, five twenty-three and five dollars. And if you'll bear with me here, when we get to page nine, you can see the detail of what those items are. And we are projecting an ending fund balance in the capital outlay fund of six hundred and forty, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, at the bottom of page six, the landfill fund, I'm going to, no comments on that. That's related to some ongoing cost monitoring costs related to the old landfill that was closed several years ago. Community redevelopment fund, CRA fund at the, uh, top of page seven, um, there is a, a HUD section, um, one oh eight, is that the terminology? Uh, loan that, um, uh, the CRA funds the debt on that and that comes, it's funded. Uh, so we make the payment and we'll reimburse from our CDBG grants for those debt service payments. So that's what this revenue and expense reflects in this particular fund. Uh, at the bottom of page seven would be the ARPA fund. So just a couple of quick comments here. The way, ARPA fund's a little different. So the way that works is we recognize that we got the cash a couple of years ago, two, three years ago. We recognize the revenue when it's expended. And at the end of each budget year, uh, what we do is re- rebudget, if you will, uh, the remaining ARPA dollars from the previous year, um, that have not been expended. Now, these have been committed and some of them have been encumbered by contract or purchase orders that have been committed per our spend plan, but we just haven't actually spent the money yet, if that makes sense. So that's what the six point one million dollars is in next year's numbers. Uh, at the top of, um, page eight, section two, we're required to list the estimated fund balance at June thirtieth to twenty-four of the various funds. So that's what that chart shows. At the bottom on page eight, section three, we're, we're required to list, uh, debt balance at June thirtieth, twenty-four, and then the principal and interest payments by debt issue for FY twenty-five. That's what reflected in that box. Now, on page nine, um, section four, um, this is a list of the, uh, capital items that are included in this budget ordinance. So you can see them in the, in the first column there. Now it's broken down, the fir- the top half of that box, if you will, are items that were budgeted for and funded in FY twenty-three, but were not completed and those carry over. Uh, the bottom part of that box reflects new items that are in there for next year. And by the way, all the new items, as you will see, are related to, uh, grants for infrastructure work. So the, if you add all those up, the total is six million, five twenty-three and five dollars that you saw on summary statement. Uh, finally on page ten, section seven, refer you there in terms of, uh, the tax rate. Uh, so in this proposed budget ordinance, there is not an increase in proposed property taxes. Uh, the tax rate would remain one, one point six one one four for a hundred dollars of, um, of, of, um, of valuation. Uh, now the allocation between the general fund and the debt service fund does change in this proposed budget ordinance. Uh, currently, the general fund receives property tax dollars at a rate of one point one three six oh, that would increase to one point three one three two. Currently, the debt service fund receives property tax revenues at point four seven five four, that would increase to point two nine eight two, and the total property tax would remain the same at one point six one one four. Um, so that's a quick, very quick review.
Bobby, thank you for your work in doing this. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we accept the budget that Bobby presented.
Aren't we having a motion? Is there a second?
Thank you.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, um, question I'd like to pose to finance department as well as council is, uh, appreciate the budget committee's recommendation to, to look into debt service to fund needs as well as the operational deficit. My question though is, what's going to happen next year? Because we're going to be in the same position next year. We don't have ourselves in a position to make up a deficit again and pay for capital. And, uh, what I'm going to challenge council to consider is, uh, you know, look at all possible options. Uh, the tax rate mainly, little bit of perspective there, you know, two years ago, we elected to adopt the certified rate. That was a recommendation or recommended rate that would more or less leave us at a kind of a flat, uh, a flat charge on, on the property tax assessment. Uh, it actually left us at nearly a four hundred thousand dollar deficit when we adopted that. Uh, that came on the heels of significant increases to property values, residential property values in the area. Uh, in hindsight, I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, Bobby had a great idea at the time to lower the tax rate, but also capture some of that growth that many of us got to experience. Uh, by not doing that, we've put ourselves in a position where when we promised these three-step incremental pay raises back, I think with July twenty-two, um, we set ourselves up for the bill that is now due today. Okay? And when you look at the budget, you know, with folks saying, you know, we can cut, we can cut, what you can cut at this point, men and women in the room, many of them in uniform, told you some stories about the, uh, the trials, tribulations, challenges they face every single day. That's what you can cut at this point. Their paychecks, their positions, their benefits, that's about all that's left. We committed to paying better after our wage study in twenty twenty-two. We made a promise to do that and I hope the council will honor that commitment that we made a couple of years ago so that the men and women that work hard for the city every day can get a paycheck and keep a position that they deserve.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Councilman Lawrence.
I have, uh, several questions. Let me start by saying, this first question I, I'm going to pose, and these are questions, these are not saying something's good or something's bad. I'm just saying, this says something should be looked at and make a, make a decision. I'm not analyzing it. And you'll see why I'm so adamant with my earlier statement if, Bobby, if you put up the first thing about first slide there, first paper. This shows government growth for two years, FY twenty-three until the budget. And the growth in those two years is sixteen million dollars or twenty percent. Now, if you do not pull the transfers out, it makes look, this growth look like it's twelve percent. But when you actually look at the true expenditures of the general fund, it's sixteen million dollar increase, twenty percent increase in two years. I'm not saying it's good and bad. That's a pretty healthy increase. So if you go to the second place, it might need to be, make it larger, if you see. Here again, I'm not making a judgment. I'm just asking that these have been looked at. The salary growth in the general fund for one year is five million, five hundred and seventy-two, fourteen percent in one year. Here again, good or bad, that's not the question. Question is, has it been looked at closely?
Very, very closely.
Uh, we're, okay.
This was before you were here.
The fire department, I'm going to get to that. I have it. I'm glad you brought it up because that salary plan is most important and we need to do it. Okay, the fire department.
Then what's the question here?
I want to, uh, Mr. Meier.
I'll, Councilman Lawrence.
Forgive me.
The fire department, I want to tell you, I met with the chief this last, he was so informed and I really appreciate. We have a lot of great employees and he's one of them. The fire department, if you look at, goes up nine points eight seven percent. Keep in mind, the total salaries went up fourteen overall. The fire department's only nine percent. There are some questions in there, some things that you could nitpick and all. I'll give you an example. When the chief and I sat down, we had thirty-eight thousand we couldn't find. And I left saying, that's not worth worrying about. I got home, looked and that thirty-eight became a hundred. And I called him and he said, let me look at it. Anyway, long story short, he went overboard and I can nitpick some stuff, but he's got a pretty good budget. And, uh, even though it's nine percent, I can tell you why it is. So thank you. Next one, please, Bobby. Wow. Okay, see. Okay, here's a biggie. Police. It's gone up from fourteen to sixteen, two point one million increase in one year, which is a fifteen point four four percent. Now, I think we need to stop right here and talk about the salary plan. I'm, that, we had, the next one, please. We can come back to that. In two thousand, uh, January, July the fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the city of Jackson, he got it. Yeah, if you, that's awful small if you, I'll, I'll read the couple of the most important things. But it was a study and the, uh, it was compared to, among other cities, Bartlett, Clarksville, Cleveland, Collierville, Decatur, Alabama, Gallington, Hendersonville, Johnson City, Kingsport, Lakeland, Madison County, Murfreesboro, Smurda, Spring Hill and Tipton County. Also, general businesses index and, and developments, I think, were considered in this. So if you go to the next one.
Larry, is this just for information purposes?
No, no, it's, I've got a question, but this is the question I'm asking.
This has been on W C.
I have the floor, I have the floor, I think. Yeah, okay, okay. Okay. All right. If you'll go down to the bottom, this says that the total in line were ninety-three percent. So that means we had some work to do, but overall we were not too bad. And you can look at this, some of the people in this, when you're ninety-three percent where the survey says you should be, some of the people are already there, some were not. And there was a plan developed to get them there, and I think it's, it's been done pretty well. That, that's going to be one of my questions, has that been looked at? But let's, let's bring, I want to bring your attention to something here that doesn't make sense. In this study, it says the police were at ninety-six percent, one of the highest of the city. And to me, that's not right. Uh, if you're an accountant in Crockett County and you're accountant, accountant in Jackson, Tennessee, those jobs might be comparable. But if you're a police officer in Crockett County and a police officer in Jackson, Tennessee, that's not the same job. So I have real questions and not only did I have real questions, I think the council and everybody had real questions about that item. Okay, Bobby, if you go to the next I think everybody realized that the police were grossly underpaid for what job they were being asked to do. So here's a little summary and I hope you can see it. I'll read the numbers.
Larry, you got to move something to. Is there another button standing? There we go.
There you go. Okay. And, and in six twenty-eight, excuse me, uh, two eighteen, these new officers were coming in at thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Obviously, and despite what any survey might say a couple of years later, they were underpaid. And I'm not saying they're not still, I'm just saying this is information. Today, that thirty-five thousand is fifty thousand. The proposed budget would make it fifty-six thousand, which I think has taken us out of being one of the worst into being one of the better ones. It's still a tough, tough job. So the, the, this year's, this year's budget, the proposed budget has four steps in it, which is a ten percent increase for a rank and file, has five steps increase for officers. The ten steps represent ten percent and the five, twelve and a half percent. And my only question, and I met with Chief Corley, another excellent employee, I'm telling you, I asked him ridiculous questions, as Bobby will tell you, and Bobby's always answered them. The chief was just more than good with, with being straightforward and transparent. I really appreciate him and, and all, is what they've done. Matter of fact, I think I told the chief, of all our discussion we had, we didn't disagree on anything except one thing, and that's not a disagreement, it's a discussion as far as my part. And that is, could we get by with less than four steps this year? When it was first on that, maybe like maybe two steps. But anyway, from what's there, the police department.
When's the question?
I, I'm, I've got a list of them here as I get through here.
You get a list of them?
Mr. Mayor, would you explain to the council members, somebody has the floor, they cannot interrupt?
This is a discussion, but there's some point you need to get to a question.
Okay, the next one. Okay, the next one. A lot of people, like me being one, were under the impression that the problem was our police and our fire were demanding so much increase that it was hurting the budget. As you can see this, all other departments, the, I'll just drop down to the bottom line, the year-over-year increase for the, not fire or police, everything but fire and police is fifteen point three percent. Now, do guys play for now, and I'll answer a couple, I'll ask a couple of questions.
Next one.
Yeah, please. Start with, just kind of recap. Our total pay increase is, one year, five million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand. Might mention, there's probably about two million additional for fringe benefits. The fire's nine hundred and thirty-eight of that. The police is two point one seven nine, which leaves the rest of it at two point four. So the fire and police are not dragging us down tremendously. Matter of fact, percentage-wise, they're actually helping. One more, and then I will ask a couple of questions. I hear people talking about, well, we need to keep up with inflation, and we need to keep up with population growth. The population growth for Jackson the last ten years or so, it's been roughly flat. It's, it's actually dropped a year and up a thousand in one year or not. The inflation for the period to two thousand nineteen to twenty-four is twenty-five point eight five percent, according to the federal government. The city growth during that time has been thirty-five percent. So instead of, we're a good twelve percent higher in growth over what inflation and population are. If you want to pick a year, you could actually go from nineteen to twenty, we had a change downward in the, in the budget, and that growth would show eighty-seven percent over inflation and all. So just, whenever you start talking, we need to look at facts. Now, here again, I said this was information and not saying, what do we need to do? We need to review all sixteen million dollars in those two years. We ought to be able to identify what they are for those two years. We need to review all of these salaries and see if all departments are using the paid, paid plan that was put in place. In other words, are they giving one step? Have some of them given two or three steps? Are we being consistent across the line? Are the clerical people in one department receiving the same benefit as the other department? Some of this has got new hires in it. We need to look hard at new hires, because whenever you hire, you're expanding government. So that needs to be looked at very closely. Not only job descriptions, but exactly what do we get when we have this new hire? Here, here again, I'm going to shut up with this for a second. This is not a criticism, but this is how government grows and gets so big. Everything that you talk about is a good idea. As, as I said earlier, homeless shelter is a tremendous idea. But you've got to figure out who's paying for it, and the taxpayers. And I'm wondering if the taxpayers are really happy with a fourteen point four percent increase in salaries in one year.
Mayor, a call for the vote.
We have a motion to call for the vote. This is a motion to call for, oh, I'm going to say this also earlier. Since we have one on Zoom, so we're not going to do the flip vote, the switch, sorry, I couldn't think of the word. We're going to do a roll call vote, we're going to roll call the vote in order of alphabetical order. So this is a motion and a vote on calling the questions. Busby?
Yeah, he's the call for the vote, to call the questions.
So, so yes or no? So we're not doing a flip, because he didn't have a switch? No, no, this is the call questions. Yes, the only question, yeah. Dodd?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Lowrance?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
McMean?
Yes.
Sounds easy also, yes, okay. All right. So now we have a motion and a second for the proposed FY twenty-five budget ordinance, and call for a vote on that, and we'll start with Busby?
No.
Dodd?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Lowrance?
No.
McKelvey?
Yes.
McMean?
Yes.
All right, motion passes five to two. Five yes, two no. Next item is new business, consideration of a resolution directing the city of Jackson to start the process to evaluate and secure appropriate debt financing for capital expenditures.
I saw move.
Any second? Any discussion?
I would like to, this will be down until we get these, answer the questions I have asked about, is the paid plan being implemented properly, and where is the sixteen million dollars?
All right, any additional questions, discussion? All right, we're going to go roll call vote again. Busby? Dodd?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Lowrance?
No.
McKelvey?
Yes.
McMean?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Five in favor, two against. All right, no further business coming for the council. Meeting is adjourned.